My name is Bob Wagner, Chair of the Hatfield Planning Board. I'm going to call our meeting of January 10th, 2018, our first one of the new year to order. To my right is Paul Dostal and then to his right is Paul Labby. We have three members tonight, which is a quorum, and Wilma Davis, our Administrative Assistant. We have two hearings tonight. One is the first time that we will have discussed the particular project for Steeble Properties. And then the second one is a continuation of a hearing from December 6th on Diamondback Properties. That's at 6:30. Very quickly, after I open the public hearing, I will ask the applicant and their representative to describe the project and any specific requests or waiver grants for the board regarding the project. There'll then be comments from any supporters of the project. We'll be entertained and any questions on the project will be made through the chair and who will engage the applicant as required. And then we'll ask if there's any opponents to the project. And again, any questions on the project will be made through the chair and who will engage the applicant as required. The board will then ask any questions of the applicant or any supporters or opponents as necessary. And then eventually, as appropriate, close the public hearing. The board will deliberate on the project during which time it may ask, members may ask additional questions of the applicant, supporters, or opponents at that point. The chair will seek a motion to either approve the project with or without conditions, reject the project, or continue the hearing to a future date with instructions to the applicant. So with that, I will ask the folks from Steeble to come forward. And I'll read the notice of the meeting. January 10th, 2018 at 6:00 PM, an application filed by Steeble Properties for the premises at 15 West Street, Hatfield, Mass. Assessors map 224 lot 34. Currently zoned light industrial and owned by 15 West Street Realty LLC. Care of Steeble Properties, Holyoke, Massachusetts, for the purpose of the addition of an 18,300 square foot manufacturing and warehouse building for Steeble Eltron. Steeble Eltron is a company dealing with sales, service, and distribution of energy-efficient products. Therefore, they are filing in accordance with our, from our use table 3.0, section 5.26, renewable or alternative energy development facilities set forth by the zoning bylaws. Also proposed is a relocation of their water quality swale at a new stormwater basin. The project is located in both Northampton and Hatfield with 11,157 square feet of the proposed building located in Hatfield. So with that, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Sure. My name is Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys, Inc., of Southampton. Erica Gies is here representing Steeble Eltron also. This is a second addition to their, Steeble's existing facility at 15 West Street. If you're familiar with it, West Street, their property is located on the west side, being an existing building here at 15 and a warehouse, large addition that they did with a green roof some years ago. And then they also own property to the north abutting that, which their office facility is in. So we have prepared an existing conditions plan. As the chair mentioned, the property is located both in Hatfield and Northampton. We have received approval from the, from Northampton Planning Board and Northampton Conservation Commission for the project.
Can you show the audience where the line is on this?
Sure. Sure. So the town line runs currently at a diagonal going across here.
So all of the current building is in Hatfield?
So currently, the entire building is located within Hatfield. This is undeveloped property, which contains a water quality swale and field area and wetlands within Northampton. But the buildings currently are entirely in Northham, I'm sorry, in Hatfield, as well as all the pavement and parking and two outbuildings that are property, product property. So what we are proposing is in addition to the rear or the west side of the existing building, outlined in the hatched area. It'll be the full width of the existing building and extending back towards the west. About half of the building, or 11,000 square feet, is located in Hatfield. The remaining is Northampton. Associated with the project is the relocation and enlargement of an existing water quality swale going into a detention basin, which is mainly in Northampton. That's why we went through Conservation Commission in Northampton because of a notice of intent that was needed to be filed for work within their 100-foot buffer zone in Northampton. So that there is no new pavement, new parking proposed. Only going to be building addition. And within Hatfield, this section of the water quality swale that needs to be relocated.
So there's no new delivery?
Correct.
Days or anything like that?
The existing loaded docks are located here. And there are no new loading docks proposed. There are no new parking spaces needed or proposed. No new blacktop or pavement. It's just roof. The roof itself will be pitched towards the west. And entering the stormwater that runs off the roof will be entering the water quality swale in the back. The roof is going to have solar panels as part of their sustainable project.
They're trying to get, with that, we'll get to net zero.
As this one, the existing building has a green roof with it as a component of it. This is going to be solar panels.
And we did in December, we were before the Hatfield Conservation Commission for determination of applicability. And we were issued a three, a D3. So was it D3?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're all okay with that.
So I'll read this for the record. So the determination by the Hatfield Conservation Commission was that the work described in the request is within the buffer zone as defined in the regulations, but will not alter an area subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act of the state of Massachusetts. Therefore, said work does not require the filing of a notice intent subject to the following conditions, if any, and there was to be attached. Doesn't look like there were any conditions. Okay.
Just for the record, do we have, I didn't see it in here. The approval from the Northampton Planning Board?
No, because all of that happened, I think, as we were filing.
Oh, okay. So you haven't gotten a copy of their decision?
No, I have that and I can, I can.
I mean, I don't need it tonight. I just, I would like to-
We can get that to you.
To get a copy for our records.
We're waiting for the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. That should be coming hopefully this week relative to the work within the buffer zone, as well as Erica's, has the copy of the-
And also the planning, the planning.
The planning.
So, yeah.
We can get that to you.
I'll make a note of that before you drop that off.
So you're not increasing your traffic at all? This is really just a storage area?
Yep, just for warehouse.
Do you have anything else that you want to present?
Just to note that the, you know, just the third page of the set of plans that were submitted have all the relative construction details. Within Hatfield, there is, besides the building construction, there will be a stone tracking pad during construction installed here so that trucks, vehicles entering and exiting the construction site, their tires can be cleaned so that the debris and mud from the tires won't track out into West Street, as well as just a new connection from the stormwater system. So those details are on there, so.
Okay. Anything else?
It should be.
So are there any, in the audience tonight, are there any supporters of this project that would like to make a comment or ask any questions? Any opponents of the project in the audience that would like to, again, make a comment or ask a question? Okay, so I'll open it up to the board to any additional questions. I have, I have one. It's actually in North, it's in Northampton. So it's more out of curiosity. You're, what's your setback from your back line? Is that, are you, are you within their, presumably you're within their?
Yes. This property was rezoned to their commercial highway, which doesn't have a setback to it.
Okay.
But we meet all the requirements in Northampton.
And then curiosity as well, and make sure that we're on, dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. What's your lot coverage at this point now on the Hatfield side?
On the Hatfield side, this is the, we're at the maximum now.
Yeah.
Between the properties.
It would be max.
So there won't be, or there cannot be any more additions because we're at the maximum now.
Well, I will point out to you that our transfer development rights program in town would allow you to increase your capacity if you were willing to entertain something like that.
And as you know, we've got that, that large parcel over there. So, well, that's good to know for reference, but I think, you know.
We're pretty tight because of the stormwater system and it's very tight, so.
And then, you know, the parking that's there, we are using all of it. So we can't, we can't undo that. We have what we need. And so that's pretty much it. Well, same with the landscaping, the front, we don't want to change that. So I think we're at full buildout with this. We will be at full buildout with this addition, so.
So if we don't grant your wishes, how are you going to get to your Northampton building?
Helicopter.
I don't know.
You can jump right in that corner.
Well, we can have this little corner over here on the, on the north parcel. We could do a little bridge and come around. Just that little, little bit, couple of feet. Yeah. And just as far as visually goes, the construction is exactly the same. Same panels. It's a, it's a five-inch-thick insulated panel. We have a very high-efficiency envelope there of R40 on the walls and then R60 on the roof. So that will be exactly the same. So it's just a striated metal panel. It's like a very pale, it's like, they call it stone or something. But it's a pale beige off-white color. And so that'll be the same. No signage, nothing. And then we have our crew, which still, you know, continues to do the maintenance of everything around. And actually, all their equipment's based on site, so everything will, that will continue as, as of the war.
So I'm gonna, unless there's another, unless something's come up and someone from the audience wants to ask a question or make a comment, I'm going to close the public hearing on this project. Is there any discussion that you all have?
I don't have anything else to-
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward deal, yeah.
Just that we have the assurance that we're going to get the documents-
From Northampton.
From Northampton, for our records, just basically an audit trail.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the site plan review for the Steeble Properties as proposed here this evening. You have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for the additional warehouse for Steeble Eltron on 15 West Street.
Second, Paul? Okay. The motion is on the table. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And sometime, if we ever organize, if we can ever organize with our representatives, we'll do a tour and you're all welcome to come. We'll make sure that we let you know when that is.
That'd be great.
The spring would be good so you can see the beautiful green roof. So we'll make sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we have about 15 minutes before our next public hearing is to take place. I see Brandon here. Do you want to come forward? So what are we doing tonight with Brandon? We have to have a public hearing on this, right?
Yes, we're going to have a public hearing in March. And we focused, wanted to come by and make sure you had-
Yeah, we just want to make sure we had everything squared away.
Okay.
So there wasn't anything extra last minute that you weren't sure about.
And how do you, Wilma, can you fill us in on what you?
Well, I just did a legal notice so that you could have that in front of you.
But what about the materials that have been supplied so far? Do we have?
I think we have everything we need.
Have you submitted your application to Lydia, to the town clerk?
Yes.
Okay. And actually, since you're here, we've got a little bit of time. Why don't you describe again what you want to do up there? You've already, you're already operating business up there, right?
Yeah, I'm just looking to get a class-two used car dealer license. Just try to add a little extra to my business.
Okay. And so we will be reviewing your, your application for a special permit with site plan approval. You know that there's a limit as to how many cars can be out on display at any one time and all of that. And then we're scheduled to have that hearing on March 7th at 6:30. And I have a notice of the, of the hearing right now that we'll file and it'll appear in the newspaper.
No, I will send it over to you and you'll take care of it, not get the instructions.
Okay.
I just need approval.
Okay. All right. Let me just do this really quick. Currently zoned business.
Establishment, selling motor vehicles and/or accessories. It's allowed in business and industrial, which is every, okay. In the notes, I don't know, have you seen a copy of this?
I have not.
Yeah. You can actually go online and look up the Town of Hatfield zoning bylaws. And in here, there's a table of use, is what I'm looking at. And under section 4.9, establishment of selling motor vehicles and/or accessories, which is allowed in business. And in the notes, display of vehicles in the front yard limited to seven vehicles. All display vehicles must be set back at least 35 feet from the front boundary line. Garage service and repair bays must be located on the side or rear of the building. Queuing of vehicles on the site must be accommodated in the side or rear yards of the buildings. So those are some of the things that we're going to be asking at the public hearing.
All right.
The license, licensing does not come from us. I think you also have to go to the-
It goes to the board of selectmen.
Board of selectmen, right. But we need to get the site plan and special permit from us. So I think, I think we're all set then.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm going to give this to you then, Wilma.
All right, that'll be fine.
Well, we still have 10 minutes. Is-
Brian Woodman?
Byron Woodman here? Do you want to come up? It might take longer than that, but if we can-
Yeah, hopefully it won't take. My name is John Perry. I'm from Dynamic Energy Solutions as well.
Okay.
We're based in Wayne, Pennsylvania. And our local offices are in Andover, Massachusetts. So really, we just wanted to pick your brains-
Okay.
About the process for a ground-mounted solar system that we'd like to, well, we're developing. And I just want to pass these a nod for construction. If I may approach and give you these to reference. Just so it gives you a sense of the project.
Oh, this is Lydia's issue's prop-
No, it's Louise's.
Louise's property.
Well, I think it's her nephew.
Yeah, she had actually come in at one point with another developer.
Okay, I think this project has been around for a little while, but now it's, it's really developing. So what we like to do is come in early in the process to get a better understanding of your, of your process for moving, moving forward. So I just have a number of questions. If I can give you a quick summary of the project. It's 500 KW ground-mounted system at 99 Elm Street. Approximately 2,000 modules. There's a visual on page two of the approximate footprint. And again, these, I've got these marked in red as preliminary. I'd like to pick them up before I leave because I don't like to leave behind something-
Yeah, sure.
Somebody thinks we're going to build and it changes by the time we get to formal documents. So it would require, it's rural residential. It's 500 KW AC, so the DC capacity is a higher rating. Okay. So it would require both a special permit and site plan review.
Right.
Would that process run concurrently? Would that be through this board or would the ZBA be involved or?
No, it'd be, both of those would fall under this, this board.
Okay.
The site plan and, and the special permit. And then if there's any wetlands or water courses or anything like that, you'd have to go through the-
To cons, right, understood.
Conservation Commission. So you're, you're greater than 500 KW and no larger than two acres. About how mu, what's your acreage here?
Approximately two acres.
Okay.
That's what I think the final footprint would be.
So just three of medium ground mount?
So we fall right at your medium, large-
You're right at that breakpoint. Yep, yeah.
That's why I was mentioning the difference between the AC and DC capacity, just for clarity.
So if you've driven around town, you know that this is a farming community?
Sure.
And this is farm ground?
Right.
And this is actually probably a pretty decent soils, if not prime. It's probably statewide important soils in this area of town. I also chair the ad commission in town. And we've looked at solar projects, knowing that it is an opportunity for another income source for a farmer, perhaps. We look for these to be spike. We prefer the spike arrangement so there's as min, as a little concrete and alteration of the soil. And in terms of removing topsoil or, in this case, probably very little leveling will be required. There's a fairly level field.
It's a really nice site. And yes, they would, the racking would be post-driven.
Post-driven, and then I see you've got an access road, impervious or pervious surface for that so that we're not, you know, adding a significant amount of concrete in the caddem-
Right.
-out to there. And keeping that to a minimum. I know with your fencing, you're probably going to have to have some concrete posting, but that would be hopefully the, the limit of that?
Yeah, typically with the fence, it's at the, it's at the gates, get set in concrete, the gate posts, unless there's some kind of exceptional soil. It's, they're usually just driven posts.
Okay, so, so the amount of pervious surface or alteration of the soil is rather limited.
Is minimal, yeah.
The other thing we've done on some ground-mounted solars, particularly since you're adjacent to, you know, residential area, a lot of the houses along Sunset Avenue, in particular, are going to look back towards that. I'm thinking of the, this ground-mounted system that we approved near the Bardwell House. The area, the fencing facing the housing was green as opposed to just the traditional silver, just so that it's a little more attractive. And actually, we, in that case, we actually had some buffering. We actually had some arborivines planted in there just as a screening along that, along that edge.
I do think there would be a pretty good buffer here, but I'd have to get a-
Yeah, so take a look at that. You see what I'm saying? I mean, this is, this is, this is business on this side, so that's less what we're talking about here.
Understood.
But you will have a public hearing and there'll be, you know, notice to the public. And because there are a number of neighbors, who knows what kind of response there might be or whatever.
Of course, understood. So the process would be to come into an initial meeting and present our package? And then you would schedule us for a public hearing after reviewing that?
No, I think, I think you could, I mean, we have an idea, enough of an idea, even more, more than a rough idea of what it is you would like to do. I think you would probably want to do your application and queue up a public hearing with, with Wilma.
Okay.
As opposed to-
Do you have a copy of the, our zoning bylaws?
I do. Thank you. So the follow-up question, I'll try, I'll be as brief as I can. So the public hearing will get scheduled within 65 days.
I'm looking at Wilma, who keeps track of this.
Per the bylaw?
Yeah.
And then there's a 90-day period where a decision can be rendered.
Right.
And the only reason I'm asking these questions about the timeline is because sometimes the application to the different programs are time-sensitive with the state.
Sure.
Does that ever, does that, can that, can that happen in a shorter period?
Well, as you saw tonight, we had a public hearing and, you know, all their ducks were in a row and the project was, you know, had minimal impact, you know, an existing building kind of thing. We approved that project tonight. I mean, yes, we do have 90 days, but we, it doesn't have to take 90 days.
Okay. It varies from town to town.
There's also, I don't think we mentioned it, but there's a 20-day appeal period from the time that we make a decision.
Oh, understood.
So we'll, we'll sign this document, we'll get it over to the town clerk. And then the clerk, the clock is ticking for 20 days and go from there.
That 65 days is not a lock. You know, we can get that up, move that up.
Okay, I just wanted to get a sense of that for our planning. I know in section 535B, you have the option for a technical review. Is that typical to have a peer review? To, you know, bring in a technical consultant and review the plans? Or would that be atypical and what would the-
We haven't had that many. This would be the, well, this is the third one since I've been on the board. The one that was on Chestnut Street was quite a while ago. So right now, we have one full, you know, not large scale, but we have a large array, you know, more than a residential, you know, homeowner's array. We have one that's up and functioning-
Right.
-out on North Hatfield Road. That's the one I was referring to earlier.
Okay.
And then there's another that we approved that's under construction right now that isn't, hasn't gone live yet.
Okay.
And that's in a wooded area, actually. It's off of-
Plain Road.
Plain Road.
And did outside consultants review those plans for you or?
Not the one that we, neither of those. Those are both very straightforward.
Yeah, this one's very straightforward too. Again, it's related to the timeline, just trying to have a sense of, have a sense of that. Are there any special setbacks for solar? I didn't see any.
Other than what is typical for, you know, for, in this kind of, you know, project, but, you know, for, in that zone, no.
Okay.
But I think you are going to want to think about perhaps some, some screening or at least a different color for the fencing. And also, as I said, you know, I, there's no way of knowing what kind of reaction or input we'll get from the neighbors. And, but it seems as if you are going to be doing the kind of installation that would allow this land to easily go back into agricultural use in 20 years if that were to be the decision of the homeowner or the owner. Whereas, you know, the, the impact on the property to allow for agriculture is minimal in terms of what you've described.
Yep, and that would be, that, agreed, that that would be the case. And you do require a decommissioning plan?
Yes.
To that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And you're looking at a life of what, about 20 years?
Typically 20 years and sometimes there are, there are extensions, sometimes five and five.
Right.
Yeah, a reasonable life expectancy. Yeah, a reasonable life expectancy would be 20 to 30.
Yeah, I would hope the person, you're going to rent this, right? Or you, are you purchasing the property?
I believe that would be a lease, yeah.
Yeah, so I would think that the landlord would want to have a decommissioning plan with you.
Of course, sure.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I think that covers all the questions that I had to provide.
One question is in terms of the scheduling for the public hearing, how far out would that likely?
How soon would you be able to put everything together to have the application going?
I think that's a great question. It would, it would depend on our engineer, so, and I don't have a perfect answer to that.
We would probably like to have at least 35 days at my desk before the hearing.
The whole plan set? Everything a month ahead?
Yeah, a big month.
Okay.
We have to have 30 days from the date of the first publication to the hearing date. So that enlarges the time quite significantly.
I see. So you need the plan and then you put out the announcement and then it's 30 days until?
Yeah, as soon as we have the application, everything with it, including the plan.
Right.
Then we'll go ahead and get the legal notice processed, approved and back to you for publication.
Excellent.
I'll give you instructions.
Okay, we would publish, we would place, place that and we would notify your butters?
You would give me, you will get in touch with the assessors office, get the listing, provide me with envelopes, but I'll give you information on that ahead of time so you know.
Okay, terrific. So in that period when you have the plans, would those also be distributed to town, town board, fire department, et cetera for review? Okay.
Yep.
Other boards, other departments.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Marv?
Yeah, just, just make sure you look at our zoning ordinances under section five, special permit, site plan approval and site plan review for all of the items that are necessary.
Yes, I have and I won't bore you with asking you questions on those because that's pretty clear.
Okay.
But I just want, we just wanted to get a better understanding of your process, what you expect to see and really appreciate you giving us some time tonight. I know you have a busy schedule.
Yeah, we should get going.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
We need to get this out in the audience.
Okay, yep. Wilma's got a clipboard. If you haven't already signed in, if you would do so please, so that we know who all is here. Remind everybody to state their name. Okay, so it's 6:35. We're going to open the, or continue the public hearing on Diamondback Properties LLC, 65D Elm Street, which was continued, this hearing is being continued from December 6th. Since folks have just arrived, I'm going to read this again. So I'm going to open the public hearing and I'll read the meeting notice. We'll ask the applicant and their representative to describe the project and any specific requests since this project has been now the subject of two hearings already. Unless there's been any major changes to the proposal, I think we can move past that. We'll entertain any comments or questions from supporters of the project, which are to be, any questions to be directed to the chair to then direct to the applicant as required. We'll do the same then for opponents. The board will ask any questions of the applicant or any of the supporters or opponents that may have raised an issue. At that point, we'll, we can close the public hearing if indeed the board elects to do so. And then we'll deliberate on the project during which time the members may ask any additional questions of the applicant, supporters or opponents and then take any action thereon. So the public hearing, we are holding a public hearing on November 1st. It was then extended, continued to December 6th and now continued to tonight. Applicant Diamondback Properties LLC of Hatfield is seeking a special permit with site plan approval from the planning board pursuant to section 30 of the Use Regulation subsection 4.18, professional medical and business offices and services less than 15,000 square feet, 5.15 warehouse and storage, 5.16 wholesale trade and distribution, all in the town of Hatfield zoning. Bylaw relative to the property located at 65D Elm Street, formerly known as 17 Little Napontet Road, assessors map 223, lots 35.1 and 35, zoned industrial for the redevelopment of an existing historic building formerly used by General Cigar Company for storage, processing and distribution. The proposal is to create offices, workshop, storage and distribution. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant and ask if there is anything in particular that's changed since our last meeting and if there's anything in particular you want to ask or direct to the board at this time.
There are no changes to the plan. When we were last here, there was hope that there could be some agreement with the one opposing neighbor and that has not come to fruition. There was a condition placed on, on any agreement that was unacceptable to my client, that being all new traffic going through the barns and just, and giving up their right, right of the road and that's just not acceptable. He has rights in the road and he's going to maintain those rights. So unless the board has any questions of the proponents of the project, I would ask that after asking questions and hearing from the public, that the board close the hearing, deliberate and issue a special permit on the plan that has been submitted.
Could you, if you would, on your, your, your plans here, pull up the one that actually shows the site plan, the actual layout of the building and its, and it relative to neighboring Okay, and then just for the, for the audience, can you orient us?
Do you want to?
Just really quickly to Elm Street and to the building and so on.
Okay, so Elm Street is out here. Okay. This is, this is our development project and Little Napontet Road's coming in here on the, on the west side of the building.
Okay, and based on what Mr. Seawall just said, that's your proposed access to the building, to the, to the, to the site, given that there was no, doesn't appear as if there was any?
That's correct.
Any change based on any negotiations or conversations between you and neighbors?
That's right.
Okay. So we've heard from supporters in the past on this project. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the project or add anything to what maybe they might have said in the past? Okay. Are there any opponents then to the project that would like to comment at this point? Please state your name for the record and the audience.
My name is Pat Melnick. I represent the Klepakis. They're the neighboring property right here, this project. I've spoken to this board twice now and I've submitted a number of different documents, which are still relying on all my previous objections that I've noted and spoken, spoken about before. I will note that our proposal was that all new traffic go through the barns, that they keep the existing, that they keep their rights under, or their existing use under Little Napontet Road, but that all new traffic goes between the barns. Apparently that wasn't acceptable. The other condition we requested, and my clients really cannot live without, is a reasonable buffer between the project and their home. As you, as you can see, you've been there and you can see by the plans, there's, there's really no buffer there at all, putting a tree or two or even, even if it is an evergreen. It's not going to buffer this project from my client's property. They're going to have a direct view into this, this massive expansion, which directly butts their home. The, the other main objection they have to this project is this, the enormous increase in traffic that, that this proposal is going to create on Little Napontet Road and right in their front yard. For that reason, we object to this, they strongly object to that increase in traffic on Little Napontet Road. I would say it's their position that if this board does approve this project as submitted, they'd have no choice to, to appeal any increase in traffic on the road and especially a project without a buffer. We feel that a buffer is an absolute requirement of your criteria, regardless of whether it's an existing building or not. You need a buffer between an existing residential home and, and a project this size and there is none here. I will say this, that if you do decide to approve this plan, my clients would ask that you not allow any commercial use of the road between 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM and not on weekends already, even without this project being approved, that's already a problem with the night deliveries and being woken up at night with the trucks. But again, we do oppose the project as submitted. We think, we don't believe you, they meet the criteria and we believe there are other ways that you can protect the Klepakis, the abutter here, from such an extraordinary change in their, in their neighboring property. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents of the project that would like to comment at this Okay. So I, I have a question because I'm confused. When Mr. Seawall, you were commenting on the fact that there wasn't any sort of meeting of the minds. You said that the desire to have new vehicles go between the barns but require giving, but that, you, you seem to suggest that the opponent was only willing to accept that if the rights to Little Napontet Road were released by the, by the applicant. Is that correct?
Before the last session, Mr. Chair, I contacted Mr. Melnick and I met with both Mr. Melnick Jr. and Mr. Melnick Sr. with, on this very issue. And I had a, we had a very preliminary plan drafted, actually we had it long before that. We had a very preliminary plan drafted just in case he bought the property, wanted to do that. I went over there and I sat with the plan and I said to them, if we can come to an agreement, we'll put this road in and we'll, we will divert some of the traffic there. They said, absolutely not. The only thing the Klepakis will accept would be to give up your rights in the road and send all of the traffic between the barns. Tonight is the first time I've ever heard from Mr. Melnick that giving up rights in Little Napontet Road is not a condition to agreement. This is the first time I've heard it. And so this has been something that's been going on for, you know, a good five weeks and I have heard nothing from Mr. Melnick other than all the traffic needs to go between the barns and Tim needs to give up his rights in the road. And that was a non-starter for him.
Right, well, I can understand that, but that's, and that may be what you heard until this point, but we heard something different tonight. Can you, can you?
I thought I told the board this, this last time, honestly. I, I thought it was fairly clear. If they agree to all new traffic, right now there's a car or two, a few cars a day going up and down Little Napontet Road. All right. That's fine. If it stays that way, fair enough. Put in a buffer, keep it a few cars a day, put all the other traffic through the barns. They can agree to that.
But, okay.
But not give up any rights to that road?
But not give up, that's.
What's new traffic? What is new traffic? And who's going to enforce this new traffic thing? Is Mr. Scottve going to be going out there and trying to figure out which is old traffic, which is new traffic? That's a, that's a vague concept that's just unacceptable.
Well, that may be true, but the other point was is that it seemed like the, it was the approval or not approval, but rather your acceptance of any new traffic flow would require giving up any rights to Little Napontet Road. And I'm not hearing you say that right now.
Right now? We don't agree with their traffic study. If there was an accurate traffic study done on Little Napontet Road that shows exactly how much traffic is going up and down Little Napontet Road on a daily basis now, we would know how much traffic is there. They can live with that. As long as there's no more, there's not additional traffic. You're looking at a, a huge expansion, a huge increase in traffic going up and down Little Napontet Road. If that is diverted, if that is diverted through the two barns and with signs, with, with anything like, such as signs, you know, if you're, if you're using X, Y and Z offices, you know, the new offices, use this entrance. But if the new traffic, increased traffic from the reality of what it is today, all goes through the two barns and there's a buffer put up, it's something I believe they can live with.
What they are asking for is for Mr. Pichorek to give up his rights in this other parcel.
Joe, I didn't hear him say that. He didn't say that.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the parcel he just bought.
Oh, okay.
He is completely encumbering that parcel. And what, what are we getting for, for agreeing to do that? He's completely encumbering a parcel with access to this site, access which right now is illegal under your bylaw, so it couldn't happen until there was a zone change there. This is creating more issues. Now, and I, let me just point out also, first of all, Mr. Melnick misunderstands what the intent of a traffic study is. It is not intended to, to tell you how many more cars go up and down a road. It measures intersections. We've talked about this before. Number two, if Mr. Melnick thinks our traffic study was wrong, he had months now to get his own traffic study. That's what opponents do. They get their own traffic study. He's not qualified to tell you that the traffic study is wrong because he's not a traffic engineer, not any kind of engineer. Number three, the Klepakis bought a house on a road leading to an 80,000 square foot building, a building that for the last 25 years they've been able to see. It has never been screened for them and Tim is going to improve this building so that it looks better when they look over there and see this building. Now, there will be an increase in traffic, but the Klepakis have no reasonable expectation that the traffic would stay the way it was because you have an 80,000 square foot building on an industrial zone parcel. And so again, another thing that, that the board needs to take into consideration that is whereas the Klepakis bought a house on a road leading to an 80,000 square foot commercial building in an industrial zone, the neighbors on the other side didn't buy a, a house on a road to a commercial building. And they're the ones now that are going to be more impacted, the people across the street from Between the Barns. And Tim has been approached by other neighbors who say, we don't support moving the road over to Between the Barns. So as, as among all of the neighbors, the Klepakis are the ones who bought a house on this road. And they have no reasonable expectation that this, that there wouldn't be traffic on that road. And I'm suggesting that this is a moderate, reasonable and measured proposal to redevelop this, a portion of this building, about 60% of this building. And before Tim decides what to do with the rest of the building, we want to see what the traffic is. We want to give the board an opportunity to have a baseline and see what the traffic issues are before any further proposals are made. Tim could have come to you with a complete build out of this building, but he understands that this is a, you know, a tight site. So let's start with some portion of it and see how we do before we go forward any further. Now, I know that the Klepakis are worried about the number of parking spaces because they assume that if you have 90 parking spaces, you're going to have 90 cars. That is not true. We are following the bylaw. That's why we put that number of spaces in. If the board in its discretion wanted to reduce some of those spaces, I don't have a problem with that. Tim doesn't have a problem with that. And if that would make the Klepakis happy, we'll do that. They, they tell me that it's too many parking spaces, but they don't tell me how many they think is reasonable. And so I, I feel like I'm negotiating with, with vagueness. I'm negotiating with people who have complaints but no, no proposals. They want screening. They don't tell me whether they want a fence, they want arbivite, they don't tell me where they want it, what they want, how they want it put in. Tim would be pleased to put screening up on their property if that, if that helps them. But I don't know what they want.
Okay, well, it's unfortunate that since our last hearing that you weren't able to sit down and hammer out perhaps some of these items, which is what we had hoped would happen between then and now. So there's a couple of things that I have noted, so, and we've talked about this, but we need to make sure, the Little Napontet Road right The Little Naposet Road right now is, there is a width issue there, and you talked about being able to widen it to the appropriate amount off of, on that property, on the property owned by the Pachorics, where the house and the one barn are. What is your position on restricting the times of business?
I think it's a perfectly reasonable condition.
But we've been, we've heard through testimony, though, that there's late-night, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning deliveries.
And if the board finds that to be unreasonable, you can impose a condition, and we'll abide by it.
Okay. That wasn't how it was initially presented when it was first.
We're not going to suggest that you put a time limitation on us, but if you find that in this situation a time limitation is appropriate, that's certainly within the province of the board, then we will abide by it.
So we did discuss screening the last time, and again, we had sort of talked about, I talked with your site landscape architect about that in particular, and we did talk about having some kind of screening, and again, had hoped that maybe that would be something that the two of you have talked about. Our industrial development performance standards requires screening. Now, of course, this is an existing industrial use, but it's a new use of this building, and while there may have been more traffic in years past, we have to all, I think, reasonably admit that there's going to be more traffic than there was in the last two to three, five, 10 years. So having some buffering and screening, I think, is only appropriate. I know that it does make it tough because of the tight element that you have here in this, in this corner here, and in this, and the corner where the office is right there, which would be the area where you would expect that screening to take place because that would be the direct line between the Klepakis house and this building.
But I'm asking you, what are exactly, here, what exactly are you screening? I mean, it's a building that, it's a building that's existed and they've looked at for 25 years, and it's only going to get better. Tim is going to improve this building so it looks better than it does now, and somehow the Klepakis have had no problem looking at this building for 25 years, and they had no problem with this building at all until Tim came along. And the prospect of it actually being used came up. And so I will represent to this board that if the, that Tim is ready to sit down with the Klepakis and put whatever reasonable screening there is, you know, within reason, on their side of the road, it doesn't have to be a condition of this permit, but he'll work with them. Tim's a reasonable guy.
Well, that would be where you would be screening what might be new impact, and that is cars coming in and pulling in there. In other words, yes, the building isn't going to change. The building's a building. It's there, but what is different is the new traffic flow. Correct?
But you're not going to screen the traffic coming and going. It's on the road.
Well, no, no. If you, if you're screening in that corner, perhaps on the other side of the road, then you're screening from the porch, if you will, what you're looking at, right? The traffic coming into that area.
I think, you know, you need to keep in mind, the barns block a lot of what's here.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking of this corner by the, where the office is.
Yeah. And so, yes, there is a view coming here, but there really isn't an opportunity to screen this unless we do screening over here.
Right. Well, that's what, yeah.
But don't forget, there's also an entrance to a garage right here, so there's.
Right. I mean, so there's a limited amount of screening, and that's what we're saying that could be provided, you know, we're willing to work with that. But, you know, I mean, on the property itself, there really isn't great opportunity to add much.
We understand that, yeah. Yes, state your name and.
My name is Ann Lanning, and I live at 61 Elm Street on Meyer, on a butter to Tim's property. And I just need to say for the record and counterpoint to what the Klepakis say about all the noise and the evening traffic, I live there, I live in the back of the building. I do not hear any of this noise at all. So I just want to say on the record that there's a counter response to that.
Right. But just to be fair, we're talking about new noise, so you're right. You haven't heard the noise.
No, no, that's not what I'm responding to. I'm responding to the comment that currently the evening traffic, the nighttime traffic is a problem. And I live there, I live in the back. It is not, I do not hear it. So I'm just trying to say to you that as a counterproposal, that there's other abutter who does not hear this. So that to limit the traffic in the evening, these late-night, I'm not sure why you would even do that or limit it to where it currently is because I do not hear it.
You don't hear it, but you also don't see the headlights, right?
My bedroom is in that back.
Well, no.
It goes around the building, so it wouldn't.
Things coming around that building.
Headlights would go red, too.
Well.
So anyway, I just want to make sure, I just wanted to put that out there on the record.
So the issue, though, is can we compel them to put something on that part, side of the property?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, it sounds as if from Mr. Melnick's comments, they're concerned about a buffer between the existing residential property and the proposed project. They're concerned about the new traffic. Mr. Seawald indicated a willingness to not only address the width of the road, as you mentioned, but the times of delivery. If the board wants to impose a condition, I think that Mr. Melnick was concerned that there'd be no deliveries between 8:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. Did I write that down correctly, Mr. Melnick? 8:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.?
Yes, yes.
All right. So that's what you would, you would be satisfied if the board were to consider a condition that there be no commercial deliveries between 8:00 p.m., 5:00 a.m., and weekends? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that would be.
All right. And that you're also willing to consider a buffer. So the question is if Mr. Seawald's client is willing to work to develop a buffer, then, and if they can reach agreement that part of that buffer, whether it's screening, whether it's natural screening, or whether it's fencing, is placed on the Klepakis property, then that could certainly, I would actually recommend, Mr. Seawald would suggest it not be incorporated as a condition, but with all due respect, I would suggest that it should be incorporated as a condition. That way, we don't have any issue about who said what to whom. If it's incorporated in the decision and it goes forward and there's no appeal, then that's a condition which could be enforced as part of the zoning approval by the building inspector. So it sounds as if there's room for negotiation just within the discussion we've had during this public hearing. And I guess, Mr., maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Melnick, Mr. Melnick, would your clients have any objection to having some of that buffering placed on their property line to protect against any impact of the new traffic on Little Naposet Road?
You can make it a condition. We can talk about it later.
All right. Well, I, to be very honest, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to make it as a condition and have a notice of appeal filed. The idea would be to have it as an agreed-upon condition incorporated in the decision.
We can't agree. We can't agree to anything if there's going to be an increase in traffic to the extent that's being proposed. So you're asking me to agree to this, and I can't without a universal agreement.
Well, if we, if we start, Mr. Chairman, with the understanding we've discussed before, that to this point, there's been no action brought by the Klepakis to limit Mr. Pachorek's use of Little Naposet for access and egress to the site. So apparently, he's got rights that go with that property going back decades. That being said, I don't think the board can place a limit on access to and from the site. If there was some agreement that a secondary access could be used and that Little Naposet rights would still be held by Mr. Pachorek, it sounds as if the applicant was willing to consider that. But if Mr. Melnick is saying that his clients want Mr. Pachorek to give up rights in Little Naposet, well, I would suggest that is a nonstarter since it appears as if there's established rights in Little Naposet today. So I guess we're coming back to the point of, Mr., through you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Melnick, if the applicant is proposing a buffer to try to address the so-called increase on new traffic along Little Naposet, are you willing to work with the applicant on how that buffer would be? I'm not a specialist in buffers, whether it's natural, whether it's fencing, whatever is necessary to somehow or other insulate your clients from that impact.
It would still need the new access. We're not asking that they limit what's currently being used in Little Naposet. They'd need the new access and put all new traffic through the new access. We can't agree, make any agreements without limiting the amount, any new traffic. I can't, I can't agree to, I can't make an agreement without that. I just can't agree to the whole thing without that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, frankly, that's, trying to determine what constitutes new traffic would be the zoning enforcement equivalent of herding cats. I mean, how do you, how do you determine, how do you determine if four cars going onto the property tomorrow is new traffic versus the four cars that went on the property last week before the special permit was granted? I think Kyle Scott would have a zoning enforcement headache trying to figure out if your clients were complaining that car is new traffic, but that car is old traffic. What are you going to be doing, taking down registration numbers? That doesn't seem like a reasonable suggestion to limit so-called new traffic. There's an access. If we're looking at limitations on deliveries, no deliveries.
Between 8:00 and 5:00.
8:00, 8:00 p.m., 5:00 a.m. Widening the roadway, which is agreeable to the applicant, creating some kind of a buffer on your client's property, then, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Seawald, you mentioned that your client receives approximately, how many commercial deliveries a week?
How many commercial?
Commercial deliveries?
Or what you expected to be in the.
We expect it to be occasional.
For my electrical business, I get one to two trucks max, say, four days out of the week. And they come, we don't know when they come. It's called midnight delivery. Sometimes they come at 6:00 a.m., sometimes they come at 1:00 a.m. But they're always small box trucks, and there's no tractor-trailers at all, you know, during that. And the load docks are in the back, so they go back, and the landings are the closest to the load dock, and they don't hear anything.
So what about your potential new tenants that you might have, that you might have in there?
You don't envision having somebody working 11 to 7 or something like that?
Absolutely not.
11:00 p.m. I mean, no night shift.
Nope. Tenant, distributor that we're looking at, they're, that's working there, that wants to expand, they don't have any deliveries after 4:00 p.m.
And how many deliveries would you, how many deliveries do you think they might have going forward in the future?
Two to three a week.
Two to three a week?
Two to three a week. Right now, they got one to two.
And if you, Tim would request that if you're going to put a time limit on it, that it'd be 10 to 5.
Right.
Every PR proposal is 10 to 5.
And that's very rare that I even got anything at 10.
10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
Right.
No commercial traffic. He wants to be able to go to his building if he wants to go to his building.
If I want to drive there at 1:00 in the morning, there's no, you know, I should be able to do that.
Commercial deliveries.
Commercial deliveries, that's fine.
10 to 5.
10 to 5.
So I think what we have before the board and the, the legal status of Little Naposet Road aside, because that's not really up to us, that's not an issue here. But whether or not the access itself is adequate, which we have determined that it's not, but that would be a condition of fixing that to make it the necessary width, which we've heard from the fire chief, who I don't know if he's here tonight, but we heard it, other hearings would be necessary. And then a restriction on deliveries, and it seems appropriate that 10:00 to 5:00 a.m. makes sense.
That's Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
No weekends.
No weekend commercial delivery.
At all?
At all.
Well, we haven't made that condition.
Right. But that would be one. And then, and then, and then buffering.
Business hours on the weekend. We might want to put a restriction on that.
Yeah.
Maybe Saturday morning, but no Sundays, no Saturday night, stuff like that.
So business hours.
Daytime during, on Saturday?
On Saturday, daytime, but, but no Sunday.
No Sunday deliveries, that's fine.
And no business hours either in terms of like, I mean, are you thinking of having, like, I know you, we saw your building and your space, and you may have offices. Are you thinking about artists in there, too? I mean, you've got these big loft spaces. Are you thinking that some of them might be sculptors or artists or others that might use this?
Now, when we're setting these limits, this is commercial, like truck traffic, right? If someone wants to come in on a Sunday and work in their office or art, there's nothing wrong with that. That's not what you're limiting to.
Right.
Truck traffic.
Well, yeah, I'm concerned if, say, you get a call center in there and, and you've got, you know what a call center is, Mr. Seawald, yeah.
Yeah, but we're talking truck traffic.
Yeah, right, right. And then buffering.
Well, this buffering thing is still up in the air, right?
I'm fine with doing buffering. I did talk to Klepakis out in the hall just before we came in, but they didn't really make a decision on it. But I'm happy to put trees on their side. I'll spend $2,000 on trees, whatever it takes to give them 30 trees, they could, or a fence. I'll put a fence up or whatever they want, but there hasn't been a decision on that. So if they want something, we can, we can do that.
Right.
And of course, if we agree to put, you know, what we're, where we're going here is we're going to agree to put buffering on their side, then they're going to appeal. And so we, we're like improving their property and getting an appeal, which is exactly what Mr. Melnick told you was going to happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, since Mr. Melnick has indicated on the record that his concern is with buffering, and he's, they need, I think, as he said, they need a buffer between the existing residential property on the project, then if the board incorporates a condition for buffering, whether it's a dollar amount or the equivalent of 30 trees or plantings for buffering, and you've limited the hours for commercial deliveries, and you've required the applicant to expand the width of Little Naposet so it's better to accommodate the traffic, then I would just suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, and I said this to Mr. Melnick at the last hearing, and I'm not, obviously, I'm not choosing sides, I'm just stating the obvious. If he's done zoning appeals, I've done zoning appeals, Mr. Seawald has done them, that if you're standing in front of a judge and you raised an issue of buffering, and there's a buffering as a condition, and you raised a question of hours, and hours are a condition, and the width of the road, and there's a condition, well, the question before a judge under chapter 48, section 17, appeal is, did this board exceed its authority in granting the special permit with reasonable conditions? And frankly, I think if we address the issues that were raised, everything but prohibiting new traffic on Little Naposet, then I would think the appeal would be, frankly, an uphill battle and a waste of time. But that's just my legal opinion. That's why I suggested at the last hearing, trying to spend the time between December and tonight, working on a buffering plan because, just for the benefit of the public, Mr. Chairman, this planning board has proposed a zoning bylaw that incorporates this use as allowed by special permit. Town meeting has approved it, the attorney general has approved it. So, you know, if, absent some seriously negative findings by the board, the applicant would be entitled to special permit relief with reasonable conditions. So that's the state of the law.
I'm gonna, unless the, I hear otherwise from the board, I'm going to close the public hearing right now.
Yep.
Good deal.
And we'll deliberate now. What is?
Chairman, I would ask, did you accept a motion to close the public hearing and then have a?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay. Can I get a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You can begin deliberation.
So is there anything you'd like to comment on or say, Paul?
I just don't want a screening mess to come up later on. We've been down the road on this thing enough, you know? We've got to make some kind of a decision here on this screening damn thing. The road width you're okay with, the 10 to 5 is good, you're okay with that? Is there any way we can get any screening thing done tonight so we can get something in here and be done with this thing?
Write them a check for two grand. Write them a check for two grand, they can put whatever screening they want in. They can put whatever screening they want.
So is there something on the screening, Mr. Melnick or your client, is there something that you can comment on regarding the screening? And that's what we're.
You guys are opening up again?
No, we're asking, no, I'm allowed to ask you a question while we deliberate, so I'm asking you. I'm asking you a question. We could, we have other business to attend to, we could pause and let them, if they want to talk in the hallway.
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right, we have, we have other business on our agenda. If you want to, if you all can go in the hallway and chat and, all right? So, we have two, we have a, what I want to talk to you all about now, we have a, we actually have taken care of all of the posted matters as well as the informal meeting. We have, we have to get to the select board, what bylaws or we might want to have on the warrant, what articles we might want to have on the town meeting warrant by January 16th, I believe, right?
That sounds right.
Yes. And I've talked to Marlene, and she said we could give her placeholders, so if we know approximately, like, if we know there's one or two, whatever, and then the actual details of that, can, we can get to them shortly thereafter. And by my count, we have potentially two. We have the bylaws relative to recreational marijuana, and then we have the bylaws regarding inclusionary zoning.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
And so I'd like to at least have us consider, and again, we can decide at some point to pull either or both after we have public hearings, but to at least let Marlene know that we're looking at perhaps two articles.
I, I agree that we should hold a space, okay? And then we can get rid of the space later.
Right.
But I think we should put in for our next meeting, a block of time that we should talk about this stuff.
Right.
Just give it a block of time and say, hey, look, we're going to have to do it.
Right. So we had an opportunity, actually, at that special meeting we had in December, Rick and Paul were both here with myself, and we had a really good conversation on the, the.
The marijuana issue.
Recreational marijuana bylaw draft, working off of the one that was adopted in East Hampton.
Yep.
And modifying it.
This is the one we got here?
Yeah, the one that I sent you, yes. And then I had a conversation with Ashley Eden at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission this week, and she's making adjustments to the inclusionary zoning bylaw based on comments that we had provided, and also some comments that I got from Valley Community Development Corporation.
Oh, okay.
Just on some clarification issues. And then, as a further update, and Paul, you were not here, so this would be an update for you. So the Ag Commission on February 7th, so that's actually our next meeting date, right? February 7th?
Yep.
So at 5:30 that night, the Ag Commission has invited the major farmers in town to come in to talk about what their interests are and thoughts about cultivation.
When is that?
February 7th at 5:30. So it'll be an hour prior to our meeting.
Okay.
So if you want to attend that, that would be great. I have no idea how many of, of the farmers might attend, but we know from, we know from articles in the Hampshire Gazette that there is quite a bit of interest among the farmers in Waitley.
Yeah, Jimmy Pachesnik, he's ready to go. He wants to, he wants to go right at it.
My guess is that there might be among some of the farmers here in town as well, so we want to get their thoughts and what they're thinking, indoor, outdoor, greenhouse, whatever.
Okay.
And I'm continuing to be in touch with the select board on their discussions, or whatever discussions they may be having on, again, on recreational marijuana.
What's the 62 and 1/2 Elm Street update?
Yeah, well, actually, let me, before we get to that, again, on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, there was that grant opportunity that we talked about, that was the other thing we talked about at the special meeting in December. And I talked to Ashley Eaton again, and we're not eligible for the projects that we've already been working on with them, because they have to be new projects. And the application is due this Friday. But they had applied for a grant, a special grant, to help Hatfield with our open space development plan.
Yep.
And our accessory use ordinance, which would also help with the housing production plan, this would be like in-law apartments. And they, Ashley informed me, and Marlene has the information, that they were successful in getting that grant.
Oh, good.
So we're going to continue to get assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on two things that are pretty important to us. So I don't feel like we need, we should be scrambling to get something in on Friday that would be probably a, an uphill battle anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, good. So 62 and 1/2 Elm Street.
I just left it out there in case something is happening, but folks need to.
Kyle probably has it. He just walked out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kyle, yeah, okay, so there's a couple of things that I would like you to check in on, on Wilma. One is, I'd like to know where Mr. Bowles's project stands on the use of that land out in front for agricultural purposes. And then also, I'm not sure that we've ever gotten a recorded copy of the easement that Mrs. Mazick was to put on her property on Linseed Hill Road or on.
No, Old State.
Old State Road, thank you.
Off of Old State.
So if you could check on those two, that would be, that would be great. And then the other thing we need to do before we leave is, we just need to, I don't know if we need a, an action on the part of the board to, to correct that notice on the Helena property, and we can do that before we leave. So, Mr. Seawald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have proposed placing some sort of curved or L-shaped arbivide here with the, and we have suggested that having screening or buffering here would have some real advantages to the Klapkis. It would screen noise, it would screen visually better than something on the other side of the road, it would screen dust, it would screen everything. The response was, we can't agree to anything unless we agree to traffic.
This is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. I'm, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, we, we asked if they could go out in the hallway.
Okay.
So, I would suggest that we entertain a motion to approve the project with the conditions of expanding the road to the necessary width, the restrictions on commercial vehicle activity from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. throughout the week, and that there be screening done in that area on the other side of the road.
Talking about this Klapki side or the, or the other side?
I don't, at this point, have any authority to enter the Klapkis property and do anything to the Klapkis property. And, and with all due respect to your learned town council, I don't think that this board can order us to enter somebody else's property and dig up somebody else's property and change it.
I wasn't, the only reason I was suggesting that, Mr. Chairman, is if that was an agreement, I'm not suggesting, Mr. Seawald, and I'm sure Mr. Melnick, and I know, we can't, we can't create a situation where you can go onto someone else's property as a condition of zoning approval without their permission. So if there's no such permission, and if the buffering, unless the buffering can be done outside of the property line, and if there is to be some buffering proposal, I would just simply suggest, Mr. Chairman, that there be a plan presented that would be incorporated into your decision. It would be a plan that we would receive after tonight, but that your decision would say that buffering shall be provided in accordance with the plan dated such and such received after the January 10th meeting. So, and if that buffering is outside of the perimeter of the Klapkis property, and it's on Mr. Pacey York's property, then that's within your authority.
There's no, I know that we talked about your dogwood there, there's no room whatsoever on that, where the dogwood goes to the northeast, I guess it is, or to the northwest? Yeah, you would put a dogwood there in the corner where the door is.
Where are you saying?
Right, right there. Yeah, right, there's, which I had recommended actually the last time, that that be turned into an evergreen of some sort. But where?
Yeah.
Better visual.
So, I mean, there's a deciduous, and so you're, you're proposing that that can age to some sort of.
But, but if you can put your other chart back up again, I'm asking there if the, if the, screening is limited entirely to your side of the, is there any room there to go from there diagonally towards the northwest?
Diagonally towards the northwest?
No, 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 northwest, yeah, that, yeah, yeah. Northeast, 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 yep.
Not, not really, I mean, the driveway's here.
Driveway's there.
I mean, you could add more, and you're going to screen, you know, the facade of the building a little bit, but you're not going to screen traffic, you're not going to screen parking.
Just going to just screen.
How about on the other side of the, of the, of the driveway in that corner where the?
Two trees are?
No, go, hop over there, yeah, there. What if you could put more screening in there?
Well, I mean, you know, you've got the barn here, but these trees are, you know, you could, sure, you could add another one. I'm not sure how much benefit you're going to get out of it, but.
I don't think you're going to get any benefit out of that side of the road.
No. I think it's, I don't think.
You know, we tried to put these two here, you know, just because they will spread, and they will provide some.
Yep, yep.
All right, well, does someone want to make a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, before you get to your final decision, what I would, I would recommend that, I have had an opportunity to review the proposed special permit findings, proposed site plan approval findings, and proposed findings for commercial development performance standards. And I have also looked and reviewed, Mr., those were submitted by Attorney Seawald. I've also reviewed Mr. Melnick's opposition to special permit findings, opposition to site plan approval findings, and what is titled, James and Trabesa Klapki Offer of Non-Compliance With Commercial Development Standards. So, Mr. Chairman, before you get to the final decision on voting a special permit, I would request that we first have a motion to accept and adopt the proposed special permit findings by the applicant, so that we can incorporate those within your decision.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the.
Proposed special permit findings.
Proposed special permit by Diamondback Properties.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I would recommend you accept a motion to accept the proposed site plan approval findings submitted by the applicant.
So is there a motion to accept the proposed site plan approval findings?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept those.
Is there a second?
And, Mr. Chairman, the third motion would be to accept the proposed findings for commercial development performance standards submitted by the applicant.
So do I have a motion to accept those as well?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second. Okay, so we have all of them on the table?
We have all those subsidiary findings that you've adopted, and now if, I know you have the conditions that you want to.
Well, but we should, so those are all part of the motion that we would now submit?
Yes, you've adopted these subsidiary motions, and then your motion.
But we haven't, but we haven't voted on them yet.
Haven't voted on the.
Each of those, we just, each of those motions.
Actually, I was, I was assuming that that motion was, in fact, to adopt these proposed special permit findings.
With a second, but we didn't take a vote on them, so I want to do that.
Well, you haven't taken a vote, okay, I'm sorry.
So we have the three on the table, we'll take them individually, so there's a motion.
Motion to accept the proposed.
Proposed special permit findings, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to accept proposed.
The site plan approval findings, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And then the proposed findings for commercial development performance standards, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so note that all three passed unanimously. So now, do we have a motion on the project with any necessary conditions?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the project with the following conditions regarding the discussion on the restriction of the deliveries. What do we said, 10:00 p.m. and to 5:00 a.m.? Do we have, do we have one for normal working hours?
Normal working hours on Saturday?
Uh, no, during the week, seven, what was it, seven, I had written down, 7 to 5?
That was for Saturday, I think.
I think we were talking about Saturday.
That was for Saturday.
I think Saturday was going to be normal.
Okay, that was for Saturday.
Business hours, 7 to 5 on norm, on Saturday.
7 to 5 on Saturday and no deliveries on Sundays?
No, no Sunday.
No, yep.
There's also road width in here.
Driveway width.
The waiver of the.
You know, that we actually require the width of the driveway.
The road width, yeah.
Okay, requirement for the driveway.
It'd be 20 feet.
20, wasn't it, what, you said 20?
Yep, 20.
20 feet.
It's varied, it's varied.
It varies.
It's varied, 18, 17.
It's only 18 feet.
I think, was there any other thing that we had written down there?
Well, the other thing, the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, would be that the applicant is required to submit a plan for proposed buffering. There was a suggestion earlier that they would propose up to $2,000, which might encompass approximately 30 plantings. So that would be if you wanted to incorporate buffering as a condition, and the buffering would have to be placed on Mr. Pacey York's property. You could incorporate that as a condition?
No, I, I don't see that as a, I don't think it's going to help, no. Why would Mr. Pachorek want buffering on his own property? Why would he want to do that? Yeah, there's nowhere, there's nowhere on that corner, and on the other side, it's useless.
If that's the case of.
I don't see that as a.
With, with the two conditions that you've adopted regarding the road width and the hours of deliveries, then your motion would be to approve the special permit and to approve site plan approval.
Site plan approval with those, so that's your motion, Paul?
That's.
Okay, with the, with, with, with the driveway and then the operating hours and delivery hours.
I second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any further discussion on the part of the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed, the motion passes.
Also.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Lester Vard, we're at 55 Allen.
We put the street sign back up.
That's not up to us. That's not up to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
What's that?
I would go to the selectmen.
Yeah, so we're not, we haven't adjourned yet, yeah, we haven't adjourned, yeah. Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, yeah, the Selectmen.
Boy, I tell you what, I get away with it every morning, my working potato trucks.
Oh, yeah, no question about it.
All the time.
Ba-boom, 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 ba-boom.
I get them where they wrap up, the fumes.
Carry your conversations outside, we still have business to take care of, thank you very much.
Unbelievable.
Mr. Pacey York, yes.
All right, so we have, we have just really one other thing to do.
I had some comments on the.
Okay.
I don't know if we're going to spend some time on the marijuana.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we have, we can spend some time on that.
Not in that interview, but whatever you had next.
Well, what I was going to say is.
You ask Kyle if he's still here, about 62 and 1/2, hell.
Yeah, I don't know if he's still here. Okay.
Tim, could you see if Kyle Scott is still out there?
No, I just take the normal roll, I don't even go to a...
All right, so, yeah, go ahead, Paul, I have my notes here.
In regards to the, this proposed bylaw, and I couldn't find it anywhere, and I don't know if it's in the rules or regulations, but I haven't seen it. Does a town, do we need a marijuana enforcement commission or a, I mean, who's going to be, I guess it's...
Who's gonna be the police?
Who's gonna be the marijuana cop, or whatever, if you will? Is it, is it the building inspector, the...
Is that a $100,000 a year job?
Well, I think that...
Or is that, is that something that we shouldn't even worry about?
Well, I think that, just like we, just like on any of our bylaws, if we approve a certain use, and then they have to go get a building permit or whatever, that's up to the zoning enforcement officer to cover that. The enforcement of the activities that are taking place within these establishments are going to be handled by the permits and licensing that they get from the Cannabis Control Commission of the state, and then also, of course, just like with bars and restaurants and liquor stores, or for that matter, even a convenience store selling cigarettes, that's handled by...
The police.
By the police.
Right. All right, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Now, have they talked about growing, it's the same thing, hemp, to make rope, clothing, paper, and all this that they used to do when it first came into this country?
Yeah, so the cannabis control law...
Mr. Chairman.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Brackett, thanks for coming out.
Bye, there.
I can, thank you.
Nice meeting you, sir.
Good to see you.
Yeah, okay, good to see you, all right, yeah, all right.
Safe.
Yeah. Go easy, be safe for the...
Just put it on cruise control, let it take a nap between here and the other.
So, we're still on, still on camera?
Coming in.
Okay, thank you. So, the law and the Cannabis Control Commission are only looking at, actually, marijuana for the hallucinogenic value, so hemp is not really considered part of this for rope or whatever. In fact, there, I don't know if there's even any commercial hemp being grown in the state right now or not, but...
'Cause I can see that opening, this opening all that up. Like I said, our first three presidents grew it.
Right.
For them reasons.
Right.
And hemp was one of the strongest ropes.
Well, it's grown extensively during World War II as part of the war effort as well, and it's being grown in areas in the Midwest right now for variety of industrial uses, so, I don't know. But that's not, this is particularly on the...
Well, I was just wondering if they brought that into it, yeah.
Paul, you have some other comments?
Yeah. Performance buff, in the event of, like, put it into an escrow account to, say, dismantle or wind down, you know, you have somebody that has a manufacturing or a processing plant, and I'm getting this, a lot of this information under the mass regulations, and I don't know if we need to put it in our bylaw, or we have to put it in as a part of our performant, or as part of the public, the public hearing under a conditional, you know, a conditions. It's similar to when somebody comes in for a development, and we've asked them to put up a bond for the road in case they default on something.
Well, we could, we could certainly do something like...
Put that under as a part of the conditions, and I'm just thinking, should we, should we put it out there so that somebody comes in and they go, oh, I didn't know that?
Right.
But this, if you haven't had the chance for everybody, is to look at the, it's a draft law, it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's number 935, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations 500, Adult Use of Marijuana.
Yeah, that's the Cannabis Control Commission's regulation.
Cannabis control thing, and if you read it, it's pretty lengthy, it'll put you to sleep pretty fast, it's 107 pages long.
I think I'll go right home and get it.
It details, I mean, gory detail about everything that's a person, or a company, or a corporation, or an individual. For instance, if somebody wants to grow marijuana outside, and we've talked about this a little bit before, is that they're gonna have to have surveillance cameras.
Yep.
They're gonna have to have security, they're gonna have to have signs up.
I don't even know of anywhere where that's even being considered.
Considered, no, I'm just saying, I wouldn't think it would be, and likewise, same one, and it's indoors, so, anyways...
Because you have to weekly inventory the plants, as far as I'm aware.
Exactly, right. I mean, there's a cradle to grave, security procedures of every, I mean, it's really very, very, very detailed.
I think outdoor growing, even if, even if you took every possible measure, just leaves the municipality it's in, you're open to problems, and keep, still keep in mind, the feds have not made this a clear issue.
Right.
Yeah.
So, they're talking that they can seize the assets of people that, you know, and even some of the towns are leery about seizing town assets, municipal assets.
Yeah, right.
So, we, we actually, at our meeting in December, we had talked about, you know, sort of leaving it open for open cultivation, but we could pull that back and just say no on open cultivation. We'll find out in February if any of the farmers are even interested in that, it would seem like they wouldn't.
I think you're gonna get a lot of farmers interested.
No, but, but maybe not interested in open cultivation.
Oh, open cultivation, I would doubt it, if they really...
They would put up a controlled environment, more than an open, with just a fence, yeah, a giant warehouse.
For instance, this airfield, this has been widely discussed, you've probably read the stories, it's all within the industrial park, steel buildings where it's being, you know, it's been talked about, 'cause it's secure, you know? I mean, you would have to have major league security on open fields, and how would you even maintain it, you know?
Major security on a, even in a building.
In a building, sure.
You have to have video.
Even in infirmaries, infirmaries are very secure places.
So, we could, we could decide to just, we had left that in there, but we could just pull that. What we're doing, actually, what we were discussed in December was, even though we have many of these uses could fit in our table of use, that we actually have special, specially designated ones specifically for marijuana establishments, even in the ag sector.
And, you know, frankly, there's enough money in it that, to be made from it, that if the town went with it, somebody could afford to put up a steel structure and a secure building to grow indoors, you know? Certainly very, it seems to be very profitable.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when you have companies flying from out west to the east coast scouting sites all the time, they're here for a reason.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul.
The other, the one other, I guess the other thing was that I would like to see, only because the cannabis commission is called for, is, in East Hampton, they had 300 feet, cannabis commission has 500 feet from schools, public, building, any building, housing, a public or private elementary, junior high, middle, preparatory, vocational, or high school, college, junior, junior college, university, or childcare facility.
So, we could make ours 500?
I mean...
I think most of the towns I've seen have been 500.
What's the reason of that?
Well, it's no different than you, you can't have a...
Have a package store so far.
Liquor store within 500 feet of a church or whatever, so it's just to separate, that there's some separation, and it's not right there near a school or whatever.
All right, liquor stores are 500 feet?
Yeah.
All right, then I agree with that. If liquor stores are...
I mean, it's like the old idea, somebody's gonna go in and buy something for a minor, you know? It's kind of a whole different ballgame, but I think that's a logic.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And, I think that... And then, it would be back to the zoning enforcement, if we had a retailer, a retailer selling it, the zoning enforcement officer, would you be the...
The Board of Health, I believe, has major...
So, the Board of Health has the...
Over cannabis.
Okay.
I think they're the actual party responsible for the inventory of the plants.
Yeah, but what about for the, but the retail...
We're talking, I'm talking about a retailer.
So, retail, they would come to you to get a permit, if they were gonna build anything.
Right.
And that they're in the right zone, they would get approval from us.
Right.
But then, once the building is up and they're operating, then it's really enforcement, it's police enforcement.
Yeah, the police department's heavily involved in each community.
And the Board of Health.
And the Board of Health.
Right.
Zoning enforcement officer would have little to do with it, other than, you know, if they missed its signage, or...
Yeah, right.
Something that was a nuisance to the public, but other than that, your PD, police department is heavily involved in the regulation of it, of course, and then Board of Health plays a huge role.
Well, and also, if I may, we...
Which could also add, in a small town like this, could add, you know, the workload to the Board of Health.
Well, but, but, we can, in addition to the local tax, there is also the town agreement, there's the agreement.
Right.
Where you actually can have an upfront, basically, an impact fee.
Right.
And we can assess an impact fee on any establishment upfront that might help then cover those additional expenses or associated costs that you might have, or that the Board of Health might have.
Certainly.
Right.
Yep.
The other thing I...
The host agreement.
The other thing I would note is that we did, and, actually, these were sent to me, to communicate to the board, but we did get some input from someone in town, I'm not sure if they necessarily wanted, known who was sending these in, but they did, they did, in seeing us on television, talk about marijuana, they sent in some notes saying that they wanted to make sure that certain things might be considered by us, and I think we covered them. One is that for, when issuing a license, or then considering suspension of a license for violations, they control activity loitering, parking issues, they must operate like a typical business and have control over their customers, and just like a bar or liquor store, no consumption or activity other than the customer coming and going, and we have agreed in our meeting in December that we would not allow any retail establishment that had onsite consumption, it would just be sales.
I read that in the, in the...
And then, no events that would create public disturbances, bands, music, sidewalk style events, well, again, if we're not allowing any onsite consumption, then...
And you're talking about a medical marijuana facility at this point, not recreational, right?
We're just dealing with recreation.
To be recreational.
Yeah, and so, there, we already have a bylaw for medical marijuana, but this, but I think we would, we would basically just, in our conditions, not allow any such events, but also, if you're not allowing onsite consumption, then why would you have an event anyway?
Yeah, right.
And then, the other one, which has to do with, with actual cultivation is, neighbors should not be imposed upon for, like, odors and, you know, manure and, you know, any kind of inputs, byproducts or inputs.
Part of the manufacturing process.
Yeah, which is, you know, not unlike what we would be dealing with, with any kind of agricultural activity, and if I remember correctly, even in the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, there's requirements on ventilation and, and, and dealing with odors, and, and so, we would, we could, we would address those as well. So, I think the three items that were raised by this individual are addressed by what we've been talking about. Now, of course, we're gonna have to put these through rigorous public hearings, couple of public hearings before town meeting, to see what people feel, and it's gonna have to be passed by a two-thirds vote at town meeting anyway.
No, I got a question.
But, actually, I was just gonna say, Rick, that being said, unless the town votes to not allow any, any marijuana establishments, if we don't have some kind of bylaw on the books, and someone submits an application to the Cannabis Control Commission...
We're screwed, they can do just about what they want.
They, they're gonna look at whatever we have, and they're gonna just go with what we have, and if we don't have anything that's specific on, you know, restrictions and requirements on marijuana establishments, we could end up with some and not have much say in where they are and taxes on them and...
It's here, whether anyone likes it or not, so you might as well deal with it.
Right.
Well, I don't know, just recently, a lot of towns, under, under what the Attorney General said last week, that I think people in Massachusetts are, several towns anyway, Springfield's put a, is asking, South Halley's having a meeting tonight, Deerfield said, wait a minute, not so fast, Granby said, wait a minute, not so fast, and these are communities that passed, they passed it, but I think, I think there's, from what I'm reading, my sense is that a lot of towns are saying, oh, yeah, or the voters said we want it, and then it's, and now it's up to the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the planning boards, the building commissioner, they're going saying, well, we, I don't know, do we really want it in our town?
The state can't even, the state can't even get it, act together as to what's going on.
Making everyone squeamish, from where I've been sitting, is the fed, federal government being unclear whether they're gonna come in on it.
That's right.
And, and seize assets and so forth.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what's, that's what's unclear.
Under this, under this...
'Cause the theory is, if you deposit the money in a bank, it can be seized.
You can't use a bank.
You can't use banks, federal bank.
Well, some banks, yeah, but there are, there are some, there are some credit unions...
Non-federally insured.
Right, but, but you're right, there's a lot, a lot of this is...
I think that's what's making everybody very nervous.
Right, well, and the recent announcement by the US Attorney General, yeah. But I think that, well, everything I've heard from Massachusetts officials are, we're moving forward, this is what people wanted, and we're moving forward, so, it's, you know, again, the town may choose, while we did vote for it, as Paul said, some communities voted for it, now they're having second thoughts about whether or not to allow it, but I think we're, we're doing our job by at least preparing ourselves for this with a bylaw. If the town rejects it, they reject it, but it's not because we didn't put something out there so that we at least have a say as to how it's gonna happen.
We covered our tracks, that's all.
The other thing is, too, if you're not one of the first ones to the dinner table, you're gonna be there with no dinner, and it's very profitable.
Yeah.
So, if you see the development in all the towns surrounding you, and you're one of the towns that said, oh, no, I don't want it, you passed up a lot of money, and it's right, it's gonna drive into your town anyway.
Right, right.
You're gonna see a lot of people changing their minds after they start seeing what kind of money that can be made.
Yeah.
And the thing, thing I, the question, going back a little, like, the fire department and the police department get together and they throw a concert every year, and they have alcohol there. Now, what stops people smoking?
Well, there's nothing that is gonna probably, just like you have people with open containers occasionally in, you know, in a park or whatever, you're gonna, you may have people smoking openly, and they're gonna, just like the police would crack down on somebody drinking.
You see it now.
No, you're right, I understand it, but is there gonna be like a permit that somebody can open a, instead of a beer booth, a marijuana booth?
Well, I think that, so that, so who...
Joints or whatever it is.
So, wait a second, when the fire department has an event over here...
They have to go to the Board of Selectmen.
They have to go to the Board of Selectmen to get a license to allow that. I would suspect that the Board of Selectmen would not issue them a permit or a license to have...
No more than you have a cigarette booth.
Right.
Right.
Right, exactly. And no, and, and the fact that...
It's a good question, though, because it does bring that to mind, but...
Because people are gonna try to do this.
Well, yeah.
You got, you got an alcohol booth, why can't we have a marijuana booth?
Right. And I think that, just like we're saying, we've, we've agreed at least in our bylaw that we would not allow retail establishments for onsite consumption, that sort of sends a signal perhaps to the Board of Selectmen that, well, we're not gonna issue that permit.
Yeah.
You know?
But what I'm saying is, like...
Someone's gonna ask, right.
You know, they have a beer tent?
Right.
Well, why can't they have a marijuana tent?
That fried bread dough trick, you have to fill your bong with it.
Well, let's put it this way, Rick, it'll be nothing ventured, nothing gained, they can always ask, and they can always get rejected.
Fill your bong.
That's basically what it is, communist tent, pay five bucks and you fill your bong.
The other thing, the other thing that we have in the bylaw, for, Paul wasn't here the other, at our last meeting, in our, in our draft, is...
More people that smoke than drink.
We, we limit the number of retail establishments to two, which is more than 20% of our liquor licenses, which is, if you tried to restrict it to less than 20%, then you have to go to a vote. That's considered a prohibition, but we're over our... That's considered a prohibition, but we're over our limit.
Now, can we change that?
You can change, yeah, sure, absolutely. You can't go less, but you could go more.
Well, the only reason I'm saying is, if it starts to be where it's a money-making thing and we got somebody else that wants to come into this town and they got a piece of property and they want to put it established.
It's dictated by who has a license.
Right.
Yeah, you have, that licensing process.
It's very rigorous.
Very, 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 very rigorous. You have to have Cory checks on your employees.
Background checks.
Background checks.
Know, know anything.
Security, security thing.
The grower?
No, no, no.
If you're running a retail store.
Retail store.
Retailer, too.
Yeah.
Retail and the grower.
I think the grower has to have people Cory-checked it already.
Oh, really?
Everybody.
Everybody that's involved in this process is very.
What's it cost to get a license?
I think like $10,000, I'm not sure, but I think.
It's in, it's in this, there's numbers in here. I didn't print a copy off because my printer would.
It was like 300 grand to get a license.
No, no.
Yeah.
Wow.
So I think, right, right. But we could, it would require, to your question earlier, Rick, if we were to change the number of retail establishments to what we now have as two, it would require an amendment to the bylaw, which would then have to go to town meeting and be a two-thirds vote, but always change that.
It can be done.
One other thing.
Well, I just hate to see the town not make money here, and this is going, this is the next big crap coming up.
Say, you're going to see it pass by you and you're going to have it in other towns right around you.
I would ask, what additional, you know, how much, how much money, I think, what did the state do, three and a half percent? Okay, so now do we have to hire more people on the Board of Health? Do we have to hire more police?
Well, that can be in your host agreement.
Yeah, host agreement.
I mean, that kind of. I'm talking about the town, the town having to hire.
No, 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 so we could.
Host agreement, which is your initial agreement with whoever the purveyor is who's running the establishment.
So that's.
That you agree to buy this or you service this for the town for us allowing you to be in the town.
To come here.
Right, and then on top of that is the 3% tax, the local tax.
Now, the other thing is.
It's a sizable amount of money for sure.
No licenses have been issued for recreational marijuana, have they?
No, it's not till July 1st. They're only being accepted March 1st.
So they're going to accept the, my application for a license on March 1st?
Right, and then by July 1st, they have to issue them.
Okay.
So you still have time to get in your application?
So, and then, under this rule, under this CMR 500, they talked about, so if somebody has a, gets their license on July 1st.
I thought you said you fell asleep reading that.
Yeah.
No, no.
You're pretty well focused on that damn thing. You going to open up a little store or what?
They say that you, six months prior, so somebody comes to us on July 1st and says, I want to open them. They have to have a series of public hearings in the town that they want to go, not us, but any town, North Hampton or Springfield or whoever.
Right.
Boston, whatever. So six months prior to them opening, so I don't see any of these opening until along, probably the end of the, probably next year.
Depends how complicated your host community makes it for you after you have the license. I mean, you could be an easy planning board to deal with, you know, where you have your predetermined spots for your sites, which I would think would be a smart thing to do, or your districts, right? And then if somebody comes in with, and they're, they want to move into Property A, and if it fits it perfectly, you just give them their requirements and it would be like any other type of special permit, right?
Right, right. And that's what we've been, we've actually made it very specific as to where they would be allowed.
Right, and you should probably bring the police chief in on it for his input, I would think. That's what most of the towns do.
We should probably invite him to the next, that next, that ag meeting.
Or the February, well, the meeting that we're having right after that.
Yeah.
John Pachurk, the Deerfield chief, has a pretty good handle of it, too. So he'd be a good resource for any of you guys to reach out to.
So we have, it's getting late, we only have one other thing. So in the, correct me, Wilma, the notice that goes to the. No, that's fine, no, but what's the name of that actual document, the specific document?
That is the Record of Proceedings.
Okay, the Record of Proceedings for the Helena project.
Okay.
Had a, the zone in which the building is located was incorrectly noted. It was noted as rural industrial/business, and it's just a business zone, even though it's, it sort of is on, because if you remember, we expanded the business zone to cover that little area that's inside their fence. So we need to just redraft that with the correct zone being noted as business zone. And just, I don't think this requires any action on our part. It's only an official document that stays here in the town, but we'll reissue that. And it doesn't have any impact on the 20-day appeal or anything like that. It's just a, it was a typo, if you will, in nomenclature, in clerical nomenclature. So I think attorneys refer to it as a Scrivener's error.
That's right.
And so we'll, we'll fix that and the record will be correct on that.
What about 62 and a half Elm Street?
I was just going to say that.
What about it? He's, he's, he had cleaned up most of the vehicles that were out there that, when, when I brought it forward the last time. And I've urged him to keep it more in, you know, in line with what it should be, which is not a junkyard.
And so he has cleaned it up.
Yeah, good deal, yes.
And.
I haven't been down there now in two weeks, so.
Yeah, right, right, and what about the residential use of the building?
He's aware that, Mr. Pacharsky is aware that that is not allowed to occur, and that should it occur again, I would have to take action.
Okay, okay, all right, good. Kyle, thank you for keeping on top of these things.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Have a good night, Kyle.
You, Kyle.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Wait a second.
We've got to stamp this and sign it. Stevel Eltron.
Oh, Stevel Eltron, yes.
Did they?
And also these guys, right? This all needs to be.
We don't have only that one copy, but I know of.
Right, so will you get in touch with the, Mr. Seale?
We're very bad at that, and I don't know why Pachurk didn't get those in. I think we've got to be careful about it.
Okay, so will you let, will you be in touch with him? You're going to need these and come in and sign them. And then what about, do we have seven copies of Stevel Eltron to sign?
We should have.
Okay, can we get this stamped?
We might have six copies, but we don't have enough.
Okay, all right, so. So we can handle the signing of this after we adjourn. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock.